Good evening. Welcome to the October 7, 2019 ETHS Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. The first item on our agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, is there any written communication?
There is no written communication this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, the public hearing for the e-learning program proposal is now called to order. The first order of business is the acceptance of the notice of publication.
Thank you, President Savage-Williams. The e-learning program public hearing notification was published on September 26, 2019, and October 3, 2019. Excuse me. The notice of publication is included in your packet.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the notice of publication of the public hearing?
So move.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. The next order of business is a presentation of the e-learning program proposal by Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you all for being here today and giving us this opportunity to present the e-learning program that we're going to recommend to the board. I'd like to first thank our team members here, David Chan, Mina Marion, and Melanie Marzen, who we all worked extensively hard on making sure that we kind of check all the dots and crossed our Ts for all the expectations for the program. So last year, we used an opportunity during the school year to really take advantage and actually plan in e-learning when we had an opportunity to do so. So we did it for a makeup day. So, in doing so, we created a committee where we had staff members, administrators, and also union representation to, thank you so much, to come together to create a process that we wanted to present to the staff to do as a pilot program. So we created an e-learning day plan, and last year, we actually did it. This year, the laws have changed, and we now have an opportunity to present this for a three-year term, and we'll go through the program as it is presented by the law.
So good evening again. My name is David Chan, Director of Instructional Technology, and as Dr. Robinson mentioned, in the region of education is the requirements, there's a certain layout for how this proposal is to be made, so the rest of the presentation is kind of structured as such. So, one of the first bullets on that program plan, and our program plan that's shared with the board, is on access. As we may know, we are full one-to-one with Chromebooks, so every student has access to a device. This actually started in 2014, and we are in our fourth year of being full one-to-one, meaning, again, every student, all grades. We also have a robust loner program, so should something happen to a student's device, whether it's during the day or a device needs repair, we have a program built in place that features over 170 daily loners and then 150 long-term loners. So again, if a student's without a device, kind of like if I take my car to the shop, I get a loner to use while my car's in the shop, same thing with a Chromebook. We have that available for our family, our students as well. We have access to mobile hotspots, so 50 full-time mobile hotspots for our students and families that may not have access to Internet at home. This expanded from an original pilot project with the Emerson Public Library. We had 15 hotspots. We now have 50 that are dedicated fully to ETHS students and families. And then, the program talks about what happens if non-electronic material. So we know that not all teachers may assign digital work, so there could be opportunities for readings, annotations, performances, things that may not require a digital aspect, and that's fine. Regardless, either way, if you have technical issues or you didn't pick up the handout for a non-digital assignment, you would, you as a student, would have two school days to complete your assignment. So, this is in accordance to our student handbook and our policy at the school. And we're going to see that a lot of our policies and programs kind of align to our student handbook, just to make things just simpler and just aligned.
Okay. Hi, my name is Mina Marion, and thank you again for being here. I'm going to talk a little bit about instruction and how the instruction would work when we were doing this remotely at home in a frigid day, as expectedly. So the instruction is going to be designed, would you hit the next one?
No problem.
Thank you, no problem. To be 42 minutes per teacher. So the idea is, the amount of time each student should spend on a particular class should be 42 minutes, and that can be combined in any way. That could be 20 minutes of instruction and 22 minutes of activity or work, kind of like the homework aspect. The idea behind this is to try to make sure that kids aren't getting too much work, right? We did a lot of evaluation last year and found that some kids had way more work than they had time for, so we really wanted to put that number and kind of imagine like a normal school day. You'd have the kids for 42 minutes. Hopefully, that's a combination of instruction and work, and we would align that with basically what we'd expect, but of course, this would be digital. We would have teachers make these lessons in advance, so, you know, tell everyone at the school, hey, this is the expectation. If you need help designing it, you know, we'll talk a little bit about what those resources are. But one thing they can do is use a template. We've created a template that they can choose, or they can look at any model lessons. We've created, I think, 12 different model lessons for them to look at, and they can use those lessons to basically form instruction if they're not sure how to deliver digital instruction in an effective manner. We then also would recommend that everyone keep all of their lessons, you know, ready to go ahead of time on Google Drive, so that in the event of a closure, that they would be able to just grab it really quickly. It wouldn't be something that they'd have here at the school. It could be something they could access from anywhere. And then they'd go ahead and share those digitally with the students, and they do that probably most likely through Google Classroom, which is one of the main ways that teachers interact with students digitally. But if they don't use Google Classroom, they can email through the gradebook. They can also send it on a teacher website, and that would also be something they'd establish ahead of time with the students, that hey, this is the method of instruction for each particular class. And then, of course, we'd also want teachers to track the project or the assignment in their gradebook and give the header E-Day. And if we do a uniform header this way, then we'll really be able to tell that every teacher has been able to assign something, and then we can track to see if students have been able to complete it and, you know, what that looked like at the end of the day as part of the data. This image just kind of shows an example from the website where teachers have access already to these digitally-made lessons, and I think we shared these with you last year. But this is a quick way that if a teacher's not sure how to create digital instruction and they're not sure, you know, where to start, they can look here. They also could obviously reach out to any of us on our team for one-on-one support in developing those lessons.
So, a major challenge on an E-Day is how do you account for 3,500-plus students attending school remotely, right? So, part of our research last year when we did our pilot, based on what other schools were doing, was to use a check-in form. And we actually had a dual model. We had a check-in form, but also we relied a little bit on the data and the teacher's gradebook. So we decided this year, based on feedback we collected from the evaluations, that it was a little confusing last year, so we went simply with this check-in form. A student sign-in form, it's a simple Google form that students would have access to on the day of the E-Day when it's called. And then, for teachers, it was also confusing for them last year, where they had to go to another website to kind of retrieve the data that we collected about attendance. So this year, largely due to Ms. Marzen and some coding skills that she provided, we were able to, she was able to create a report that teachers will get emailed to them that will have all their classes and students that signed in on the check-in form. So again, one process, singular check-in form for attendance. Students who are unable to sign in, just as, again, we have in our student handbook or pilot, if a student's unable to come to school that day, they can submit for an excused absence. So if there was a technical issue, if there was some reason they couldn't get access to that check-in form, or they had some issue, they can still be able to submit for an excused absence. And similar, again, to the student handbook and what happens on a regular absence, they would be granted two days for makeup work. So again, everything's lined up as well. Just a quick view, there's the check-in form on the left. That pretty much will be similar to what we had last year, but there is an example of that, this report, again, that Ms. Marzen created, where a teacher would get all their classes and all the students listed in alphabetical order, that they just take and then submit their attendance in our gradebook via that.
So the next section, the next section's about training. So of course, we want to make sure everyone's well-trained for this event. Click forward for me, please, thank you. So we want to make sure teachers are very well-aware of the expectations. So there's already been some email communication with the teachers, and they're aware of it, also from last year, the teachers that were here. We've put together an informational website with very clear instructions on what the expectations are for a teacher. We'll be putting together a training video so the teachers can watch that in the comfort of their own office whenever they want to refer to. And then, of course, we'll also offer in-person support and consultation, you know, really stressing that the communication to all the teachers is clear and the expectations are the same for everybody, so that some teachers don't feel like there's a different way of going about it. They all know, hey, this is what our expectations are, this is what we need to do that day, and that training will go out to all of the teachers uniformly. And then, of course, the students and families, the communications office has already been working closely with us to, you know, let the community know that this is something that's going on, and we'll continue to work closely with them to make sure that the families and the students know exactly what's going to happen. So there's multiple methods of getting that training. It's not just through the teachers, but it's also directly from the school, so that everyone has a similar message. And then, of course, we'll have information on an e-learning page on the ETHS website, so they can always go there for the facts as well. This is an example of the website we already have up and running for the teachers, so that they can see, and they've already been, share this information, how this would work, and then can have clear information straight from us, not, you know, through different channels, on how they would go about running the E-Day.
So we also have non-instructional staff members on an E-Day, and they are, they do have responsibilities as well. So, grouped by collective bargaining, the custodian, maintenance, engineer, and 12-month safety would work their normal shifts, and the administrators exempt food service and support staff would refer to instructions from their supervisors.
Last year, as we mentioned, we already did some evaluation of the program. We were able to evaluate by sending digital surveys to students, teachers, and families last year, and gathered a lot of feedback. I think we shared some of that with you last year. This year, we also would include non-instructional staff to make sure that we are getting all the stakeholders' information and how their feelings are about the program, so that after the three-year term, we can continue to make changes as needed to make it even better as we move forward.
So as I mentioned earlier, too, we had a lot of feedback on attendance, and then the second major area of feedback was regarding communication. So again, having things lined up, working closely, as Ms. Marion mentioned, with our communications office, having these messages and emails set up prior to the E-Day as best as we can, things on School Messenger, or voice messages, things like that, ready to go. We've had the expectations email already sent to staff, students, and families on September 27, and we have, again, worked with the communications department to just line this up with the emergency and severe weather notifications. So there's a page on the ETHS website that families can go to, so what happens when a snow day is called? In this case, now, what happens if an E-Day is called? And on that day of communication, we will have an email, again, blasted out to families, and then we'll also have a large banner on the website that we had last year that will have information, both of which will have information on how to check in and guidance on how to check in with your teachers for students on what the assignments are. And that, I believe, concludes our presentation, but if there are any questions, we will be available to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that presentation, that information. So, I will now hear any comments or questions from the board? Yes?
Thank you, this was really interesting. And you mentioned that you have training, which I assume is more the technical piece of this, and that you have those pre-baked lessons to help people. Is there something in between that, like a teacher who's uncertain about how to use this technology to develop a lesson or to follow through on what they're already doing in their class? Is there sort of trainings or sort of in-the-moment kind of one-on-ones that people can do to prepare?
Absolutely. So we have on our Monday, the Independent Professional Times. We would definitely, once this was all, you know, hammered out and, you know, written in stone, offer some various times that people can stop by, meet one-on-one with us. You know, people learn differently, you know, just like kids, teachers learn differently, so some want that one-on-one attention, some just want to watch a video and be able to watch it at nine o'clock at night when they finally finish grading, right? So I think we'll have multiple channels. We did that similarly last year, and I think that was pretty effective. You know, these lessons that we have already pre-baked, as you said, were ones that could maybe fit in anywhere, but we really do want to encourage teachers, you know, to pick something, have something ready to go, but in, on the day of, right, if we're sensing, hey, there's a big storm, to really think about their lesson and say, okay, I had already planned this, and this will work, but I could also have them working on these other things. And, you know, we've worked very closely with the staff on our team to develop sort of that ed tech sense here at ETHS, and I think many teachers are pretty comfortable at this point. So we're hoping many of them will then take what they've learned from us and make another lesson their own, but still have something ready to go, so if they need something to fall back on, they'll feel comfortable with that.
And I could just add, you know, as a former chemistry teacher, and just teachers in general, we generally have our units planned out, you know, with the week, two weeks, three weeks. And one of the beauties of the E-Day specifically is that, you know, it's not a day off. It's just, it's a slight switch, right? So I can, if everything, if my materials are set up, it's very possible that what I had planned for the E-Day can still happen. And I think that's huge. And I think that's what, you know, Ms. Marion said, you know, in terms of either continue with the lesson you already had planned, because, you know, you have the materials, maybe you have access to, again, a video, or the teacher is going to record a lecture, she's going to post it on the website, and you can continue as if nothing has happened. Or you kind of substitute something that you take advantage of this opportunity where you are not at school, but you are in your own environment, your house, where you could potentially do something else, or again, something that you couldn't quite fit into your curriculum. So there's a lot of variety that I think we can offer teachers and give them opportunities to continue or try something different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned that the lessons would be set up to be like a 42-minute schedule, and without the structure of like the school day, being in school with the bells and the teachers and things like that, I feel like it might be setting students up for failure in terms of being able to actually participate for the full 42 minutes for all nine periods or eight classes that they probably have. What have you guys been thinking about to address that?
So I think the 42 minutes, that's a great point, is a guide for teachers, right? So when teachers are planning, you know, we're thinking about that 42 minutes. This is how long it would take me to talk about this, this is how long I want them to work. And we really put that guideline there so that teachers can continue to plan in a way similar to what they already do, but not necessarily, you know, think it has to be 42 minutes of a lecture and then expect that the students are going to do 30 minutes to an hour of work, right? We really wanted to kind of frame it so that students aren't getting more work than they would on a normal day, which is some of what we heard last year. So I think, you know, while we know it'll take some students longer and some students shorter, we really picked that as a benchmark for planning, and I think teachers generally know their students fairly well, and so when they, you know, a student comes to them and says, hey, I worked on this for an hour and I didn't finish, that's, I think, a conversation a lot of teachers are willing to have with a student in good faith, planning that, okay, I thought this was going to take 42 minutes, but it might have taken me a little longer, it might have taken me a little less, really there as a benchmark, so that students could have kind of an idea of how long they should be working. And if they get to like two hours, you know, they should stop and probably have that conversation, and putting it out now will hopefully give students the idea, too, that like, hey, this is taking me way longer than I thought, maybe I should have this as a conversation with my teacher, rather than feel the pressure to work till midnight trying to get everything done.
Jim?
How does this impact the number of school days? Is this considered a day, a loss of a day of instruction, or because learning is still going on, does it impact the number of days at all?
So the good thing is, if we use this as an emergency day, and that's what the recommendation is, that we would only use it for any emergency day, which in our case, most likely would be a storm-related blizzard type of deal, so we would not have to make up an additional day at the end of the school year.
It counts as an instructional day, just to be clear.
Which is awesome, yes. So, teachers then, if I understand this correctly, once we're getting close and we're all watching the weather and you know it's coming, then teachers are gonna put this lesson together? Or, this is my question, do you expect them to have this lesson already in their pocket or somewhere in their mind? So, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it could be a variety. So as I mentioned, you know, you could be a teacher that you could just continue with your curriculum, right? When that E-Day is planned. You could be a teacher that, and one of the things we're going to do during training, many of our teachers have a substitute folder, right?
Sure.
Where they have a lesson that is ready to go should they become sick.
Yes.
So one option, one thing we promote, is having an E-Day lesson folder, right? So they have, and it's to be digital, so they have that ready to go, too.
Yes.
So, both of those options, I think, we will definitely promote and share with our teachers, so that they can have, you know, depending on the situation, the need for one or the other.
And, you know, of course, not that I am predicting the weather, but it's possible that we could have like back-to-back
Yes.
... days off, so they might want to have multiple lessons or something that could continue.
Absolutely.
You know, nothing.
Nutrour, I think, has back-to-back days off. I don't know that ETHS has ever had that. But I guess anything's possible.
I was just going to mention that typically each year, we have five emergency days scheduled on the calendar.
Ah.
So it's up to five.
Right, okay, super. All right, other questions? All right, here's my script. All right. Thank you, all of you, Dr. Robinson and company. Next is the public comment portion of the public hearing. Are there any comments from the public regarding this? This isn't, this isn't public comments, I know, that's, that's pretty confusing, sorry. Hearing none, I will declare this hearing adjourned. The board will take action on the e-learning program resolution later in the agenda. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great job, thank you.
Yes. This is exciting. Very forward-thinking. Okay. All right. We don't do the resolution now, do we? That's later. Yes, okay. Now, we are at our information section. So, I hear, I see Mr. Farmer. So report on summer school.
Bill Farmer is the Director of Summer School.
Yes.
This is not the first year that he's come before you to give the report, but he's here to give a report on summer school 2019.
Good evening. I just wanted to kind of give an overview of the report that I submitted to the board and highlight some aspects of our summer school program that we ran this past summer. Just as a reminder, we operate a 26-day program, and it's broken up into two 13-day sessions. About one-third of our ETHS students will enroll in at least one summer school course. Our programming provides opportunities for students either to get enrichment, to take an extra course, to prepare for a course that they're about to take in the upcoming school year, or to recover credit from a course that they were unsuccessful with in the school year. Per the Illinois School Code, we have to make sure that students are engaged with 60 hours of instruction time in order to earn a high school credit that they can apply towards graduation. To accommodate this, we offer courses in two formats, 26 days for two and a half hours a day of instruction, or 13 days for five hours plus a 30-minute lunch break to break up that allotment of time. Just so you can see kind of the overall trends with summer school relative to overall enrollment, we have seen a little bit of a dip in the last couple of years, but that is, when we look at the next slide, that's really attributed to that summer school predominantly serves our incoming freshman student population and sophomores, and as students get older, their summer plans and time commitments tend to not involve summer school. And so, in 2017, we had the largest incoming freshman class, and then the freshman classes have been tapering off a little bit from year to year, so that kind of, it looks weird that our total enrollment is going up in our summer school enrollment, but the pattern is pretty consistent with what we've expected, or what we've experienced in past years. So, as you can see again, for incoming ninth graders, summer school is very popular. Over 500 of our incoming freshman class, students took at least one summer school course, and some of them actually took two summer school courses, and then we kind of see the gradual taper. Most of the programming that we offer is really critical to the transition of students from their middle school experience into the high school experience, and we'll talk about some of those special programs in some of the upcoming slides. So one of the more popular courses that our incoming freshmen will take is the Access ETHS. This year, we had to expand to nine sections. I think the previous year, we only had eight sections. This served a total of 173 students. Within that, we also offer co-taught section of the class to make sure that we're best able to support and accommodate our students with IEPs. This course is coordinated by Ally Hart, who's our new student transition coordinator, and she helps to provide curriculum and support to make sure that the activities run smoothly for all of these students. I actually used to teach this course in the summer, and it's well-received because it gives students not only the opportunity to learn the layout of this massive high school, but it also allows them to start to meet some of their new classmates, because they're all coming from different middle schools, and it also connects them to different resources to learn about athletics, extracurriculars, student clubs. They meet with counselors and social workers to really get a sense of what it means to be a high school student and how to be successful when they arrive at ETHS in the fall. Every year, we continue to survey the students who participate in the course, just to get feedback, to see how the curriculum is being received and if any adjustments need to be made. We do focus on helping the students to learn about the Chromebooks and the programs that they're going to be using with a lot of their teachers when they begin classes in the fall. Over 90% of the students agree or strongly agree that they feel better prepared for their classes at ETHS, and I included just a few of the quotes. You know, they do the scavenger hunts, they meet all these great guest speakers, they get to feel better and they feel prepared for freshman year. This one student also particularly liked the fact that they had a summer reading project that went along with Access ETHS. It helped to make them more prepared and build their confidence. And then the third quote really kind of talks about how that building of community happens during the Access classes. So even though we run maybe four or five classes, separate classes, those classes often come together at parts of the day to have communal activities, to go outside, to go to the fieldhouse, to do a scavenger hunt together, so that really helps to build that camaraderie among the incoming ninth grade class. Another important program that the district supports is reading and math in the social context. And this course is offered targeted to students who are not quite at the reading proficiency that we would like them to be at, at this point in their academic career. Kwanah Brown, our school-wide reading specialist, coordinates extensive outreach efforts through email and phone calls to over 100 families to really explain the benefit of this course. We offer this course at a full scholarship to make it accessible to all students who want to attend, and this year, we had a record-high enrollment of 44 students who participated in the course. And during the course of this, we track their reading progress throughout that 26-day period, and the majority of students all made gains. Some of their gains were so significant that it actually changed their trajectory of what courses they were assigned to be taking in the fall with respect to their eating, reading classes, or even their biology classes. And in addition, this course kind of incorporates many aspects of the Access ETHS curriculum, so that students are not only getting enhanced reading and math skills, but they're also learning about the various opportunities that will be afforded to them once they arrive at ETHS. Just to highlight some of our other summer prep courses, Prep to One Humanities served about 57 students this year. We had Prep to Geometry and Prep to Two Algebra, serving over 100 students. Reading and Science is a special course, again, to support students preparing for their high school science classes, and we offered a new course for the first-time STEM in Sports, which was a very popular new course offering, and that enrolled 44 students. Also, we had College Now, which is a program that helps rising seniors to prepare with their college application process and work on writing their essays. We offer this in a four-day workshop format for about two and a half hours a day. Ms. Ari works with these students, and we serve 25 rising 12th graders, which was the largest group we've had, and we may have to offer two separate sections of this in the upcoming year based on the popularity of that. Just to review, we did have some new course offerings. The STEM in Sports course was offered in 13-day formats for both sessions. This was open to rising ninth graders and 10th graders to help them kind of get ready for high school science courses. We did offer a new We did offer a new elective that's only offered currently right now in the summer, which is biotechnology. We're hoping to transition this to offering during the regular school year as well. But we're hoping to see more teachers kind of take the opportunity to pilot new curriculum ideas in the summer. And so one of our teachers had this idea and we said it would be great. And so we're continuing to try to support this type of initiative that some of our faculty are willing to take. I know it's early to think about the summer as the temperatures have just started to cool off into the fall. But just so that we know when the upcoming summer school session dates are, summer school's gonna begin quite early this year since our school year is ending a little bit earlier, so we'll be starting on June 4th. And it will be concluding on July 15th for the second session. And the online and mail-in registration will be coming up on January 10th. As far as kind of recommendations for the future, they continue to kind of be the same as they have been the past couple of years. We continue to look for ways to balance the expenditures and revenues related to summer school. Because we do offer some scholarships to students to make summer school as accessible as we can, to as many students as we can, we do currently spend more money than we take in in revenue. So we continually try to figure out ways to, to balance that out, to support our students. And then, like I mentioned, you know, we've continued to try to reach out to teachers. And last year, we were excited that Andy Minor came forth with this STEM in Sports idea. And we hope that more teachers kind of see this as an opportunity to try out some new ideas. And if we have teachers who are willing to teach a course, we're definitely willing to try to offer it and gear that towards students who might be interested in expanding their educational enrichment opportunities in the summer. But I will open it up to any questions that people may have.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. That's great.
This is great. Thank you. I was curious to the extent, for lack of a better word, what kind of marketing you do. So, that, I know like eight, a lot of eighth-grade kids know, oh, I wanna take a summer class, I wanna take Access, because they've heard about it. But is there a sort of a concerted effort to make sure that all the kids are hearing about that consistently? And, and even within the high school as they get here, how are we making sure that kids know it's available and are maybe encouraged to come? Maybe they think money is an issue, so they don't even bother to ask. You know, what are, what are some of the things you're doing to, to combat that?
Sure. So, we definitely do email blasts that include families, but also to students. So when students arrive, they get email notifications informing them when summer school is coming up. Counselors are also familiar with the course offering, so I meet with them when we've determined what courses will be offered in the summer. And we talk about target populations of which students you may want to reach out to and who these courses might be of interest to. And I know departmentally too, especially with the biotechnology course, I teach biology during the school year. So all the biology teachers kind of put up a flyer in their classroom and they talk about it right around the time in the curriculum where we're doing some biotechnology kind of preview work to say like, hey, if you thought this lab was really interesting where we inserted DNA from a jellyfish into bacteria, you may wanna consider taking this biotechnology course that we offer over the summer and things like that. And I know some of the other teachers try to promote courses like the economics courses and things like that through their departments as well. But I do think there continues to be trying to figure out that perfect formula though to something that might be interesting, but is also feasible for upperclassmen to take. And that's where we run up against the 60-hour requirement in order to earn credit. But the College Now is an example of something that we only offer for two and a half hours for four days. There's no credit link to it, but we do have students who are interested in, in taking that kind of format of an activity or course.
Great. Thank you.
Jim?
How you doing? Thanks for the presentation. I think, I remember last fall, we talked about the possibility of collaborating with Oakton Community College to provide, to develop courses that would help students that were below skill level to try to prevent them from taking non-credit-bearing courses when they feed into Oakton. I don't know if anybody remembers that. Have we, has there been any work done with Oakton around that? Course offerings during the summer to kind of?
In terms of new course offerings, no. We do have an existing partnership with Oakton and several of the neighboring high schools that offer a few career-based courses that we have slots in. But we haven't done anything targeted to that specific area. Most of the, the coursework that we've done, kinda like the STEM in Sports was a new idea to try to provide additional academic supports to students who maybe weren't quite at the level of skill for science classes at high school. And the idea was to try to come up with some creative ideas like that course and, and maybe even try to shift away. Right now, we have a lot of courses like Prep to Geometry, Prep to Humanities, and they don't sound very appealing to students. And so if it's more of like a creative writing course in the summer that incoming freshmen can take to kind of tackle those same skills, we're kinda looking at trying to rebrand some of the existing courses and reach out to the talent that we have within the school. But it is a good suggestion for us to maybe connect with partners and Dr. Beavis might have some additional information for that.
Thank you.
I think I have a question.
Yes.
So, you, in, in the sort of informational report that we have here, I'm just, you talk about offering cour-, my, my daughter's been in summer session twice now, I think. And she's a junior, but actually maybe three times. Can't remember now. But in any case, you talk about, you know, offering courses for enrichment, course preparation, and academic recovery, which is a pretty broad swath of
Yes.
purposes. Do you have any data, though, on, on sort of where your students are primarily falling? Or how that sort of breaks out in terms of motivation for taking summer school? That could potentially maybe help
Yeah.
you in your strategy and your planning and marketing?
Yeah. I mean, at, at this point, the majority of students who are enrolled are enrolled in transition courses to high school, which typically are prep courses, but we do offer some elective. So, while a lot of the incoming freshmen may take a prep course, they may also take the introduction to journalism course, or graphic design, or drawing and painting. And so, by and large, that is the majority of our student population. And we've actually seen a shift to much fewer students taking courses for recovery because of different recovery options that students are taking advantage of during the school year. And we're pretty much at like an operating capacity size. We could accommodate maybe a few hundred more students at a time. We kinda can peak out at like 1,300 or 1,400. But one thing to remember that during the summer is that usually we only have half of the building operational because of like summer projects and things like that. So then we become kind of limited with space. But we're definitely shifting more towards an enrichment and preparatory sort of approach to our summer school curriculum. And that's kind of the trend we've seen.
Well, thank you again for your report and for all the information and for answering our questions. Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the discipline and suspension report. Dr. Robinson is coming back up for that. Dr. Levy?
And he's joined by Dr. Levy from our research and assessment office.
I'm back.
Hey.
So I'm very happy to present the 2018-19 Discipline with Dr. Levy, who's here with me today. Before we get started, I did want to just say out loud that I think we've done some great work. The work is not done. We have a lot of good work to do. And we are in the trenches, really looking at the data to ensure that we're making decisions that really impact our school community. So, the order that you'll see the presentation today, we'll start out with some updates. We'll talk about the number of discipline actions, suspensions, days spent outside the classroom, students with suspensions, number of suspensions per student, and we'll talk about next steps. As far as updates, a couple of years ago, we really talked about this whole notion of students trying to reengage with the opportunities to participate in some of the social things in school. Dances, participating in, in games, going to, just having that high school experience. Two years ago, we started something called a social probation reduction contract. This year, we're really focusing on students feeling like they're belonging to the school district. I think this really reinforces that whole notion of collaborating with, students being able to collaborate with their dean, to come up with a plan for a reduction to their social probation. So we're happy to deepen that work. We're also informed by Senate Bill 100. The last several years continues to be a focus on some of the practices that we're doing in the discipline office. We also are continuing our focus on looking at the data surrounding black males and following that sub-cohort of students and looking at the, the positive growths that they've made. And finally, with, with all the news and concerns about e-cigarettes, we are identifying and looking and assessing the usage here at ETHS. And we're looking at more ways to better provide interventions and educational opportunities for students as well.
Okay. So I'm gonna walk through a few data slides. So, here, and this is in the report, we're looking at, we're starting out looking at the total number of discipline-related actions and then suspensions. So, for last year on this chart, the 2018-19, there were a total of 4,917 discipline-related actions. And of those, 520 were suspensions. So we, the table underneath lets you know the unique number of students who are receiving the discipline actions. So last year, there were 730 students receiving 4,917 discipline-related actions. And that's a decrease over the last five years since 2013 where there were 912. So, you can see a steady decline in the number of students receiving discipline-related actions. So when we look at these 730, you have the clicker, students, which represents 21% of our total population for receiving all of those discipline actions. And we break it down by race, ethnicity. 352 are students who are identified as Black, African-American, African-American, which is 37% of the total Black African-American student population. 171 are identified as Hispanic Latinx, which is 26% of the total Hispanic Latinx student population. And 171 students are identified as white, which is about 11% of our total white student population. And when we look at, now we'll transition from, looking from, talking about discipline actions to suspensions. So, the unique number of students who received a suspension inside and/or outside last year was 264. It's down from 470 students 10 years ago that were receiving inside and/or outside suspensions, which is a 44% decrease over that time span since 2009-10. And proportionally, that is 7% of our student population with one or more suspensions. So, we've decreased that by more than half since 2009-10 where 16% of the student population was receiving one or more suspensions. And in the past couple of years, it's been 7%. So we're still trying to chip away at that.
The next slide, you'll see the number of days outside of the classroom. So a part of the work that we're doing, and again, going back to Senate Bill 100, we're really trying to keep students engaged. So, 866 represents the total number of days outside of the classroom. And again, if you look back just to 2013, 14, we've made some tremendous gains there. Of the 866, 483 of those students are actually inside. So they're in our Alternative Learning Center where they still have access to their students and being able to still engage in, in school. Just 383 of those incidents were students who were outside suspended. This also, what I really loved to see with this chart here was a downward trend, especially the 10-year gap here. You have what used to be in 2009-10, we had about 31% of our Black students. Although again, we have a lot of work to do, we're at about a half percent there. And this also is reflected in our Latinx students as our whites, and our white students, who have all significantly decreased the number of days outside or being suspended one or more times. Dr. Levy's gonna kind of break these numbers down in a different type of graph.
So that chart that Keith just showed you is in the report. And the next few charts are just a different way, a visual way of looking at that same data. So this, so if we, the next two slides, we'll be looking at our, our unique number of Black students compared to the total enrollment. So here, we have, in small writing, in 2018-19, it was out of 960, our total Black student enrollment, 143 who had one or, that had one or more suspensions for last year. That's the 15% from the chart before. So, so if I look at the very far
I'm sorry.
left, that's okay. The 2009-10, that's out of the 993 total Black student enrollment in 2009-10, 312 had one or more suspensions. That's 31%. Up to now, last year, where the 143 out of 960 had 15%. So if you go to the next slide, this is what that looks like. So this is the percent that were, were in that chart from two slides ago. It's just a different way of kind of pulling this apart and, and showing you the numbers and what these proportions are really representing. We did the same, similar for our Latinx population. So if we looked at, I'm sorry, I have to turn the page because it's small. From 2009-10, 61 students identified as Latinx received one or more suspensions out of that total population in 2009-10 of 369 Latinx students. Fast forward to last year, which we know this is a growing population. There are 648 students who are identified as Latinx. And of those, 55 had one or more suspensions. So that was the, if we go to the next slide, that's the 8%. So that's where our decline from 17 down to 18% to show you. And then the next couple looks at our population of whites. So we had in 2009-10, 1,324 students total white student enrollment. And of those, 74 had one or more suspension. Up to last year, there's a little bit more, 16, just over 1,600 students. And 53 had one or more suspensions. So that's where we went from 6% down to 3%. So just a, a more visual way of looking at that one chart and pulling it apart a little bit more. And so our next data chart, this one is looking at our isolating race and the intersection race in general and keeping a focus on our Black male students. This is first semester data, so comparing first semester into first semester for the past four years. We looked at the number of discipline incidents by the different incident categories for our Black male students. And I've highlighted, so in the bottom, I'm just gonna talk about the, the rows that are highlighted and shaded in gray. So, we have, the total number of incidents has reduced. So the number of Black male students with incidents in 2015-16, it was 174 Black male students out of the total 464 Black male student population that had a discipline incident. That was 38%. Last year, it was 100- Last year, it was 112 Black male students out of the total population of 435 Black male students, and that represented 26% of our Black male students receiving incidents. So we're reducing the, looking at a reduction in the number of students and proportion. And what we've talked about for several years is those more subjective categories of disruptive acts and defiance of authority, and we are seeing over time a reduction in the number of discipline incidents in these categories over these last four years.
Yeah. So just to, if we're looking at next steps and using this as kind of a springboard for that, we're looking at the disruptive acts and defiance of authority here. Again, we've decreased significantly in the last couple of years. But one of the things that we've been looking at, again, moving forward, is what is, when you talk about this objective portions of the discipline options, what is a disruptive act? And what is a defiance of authority? These are truly subjective, and one of the things we did with our discipline committee for the district is we had a subgroup meet to really kind of look into those particular referrals, to really tease out what exactly is that, so that we can really tell the tale and isolate the treatment. So we are on, we're doing that still. We're in a very good place. We're almost to the point where we'd like to make some recommendations, but the subcommittee is still continuing to look at that work. Next steps, we're also looking at evidence-based substance abuse prevention programs for e-cigarettes and our jewel usage. We, last summer, had two of our staff members, our counselors, they had a summer program where they really looked at these evidence-based programs and made some recommendations. They presented at our last discipline meeting, and we also have a subcommittee looking at that work to really review and see what, which direction that we really want to go with really informing our students and providing the needed support for this unfortunate usage. We're continuing to look at data to target the areas of focus, as we've always done. We're also looking to continue to build relationships with local agencies in Evanston so we can help identify, you know, what exactly we can do as a community to support these kids, because we all know that discipline is kind of an outcome of something else that's going on. We're also creating more robust alternative to suspension options, and we are also rethinking our PBIS approach to better support the culture and climate of the school community. That is our report for last year's discipline data. We're available for any questions.
Wow, thank you. Thank you for that report. Gretchen?
Thank you so much. Thank you in particular. I already mentioned to Dr. Robinson that I really appreciated, and Dr. Levy, you too, the breakout as a percentage of our student population. I think, I think you did it last year, two to a degree, but I'm always having to ask for not just the raw data and the total number of students in any given category doing any given thing, but as a percentage of our student body, because really, that's the number that tells the story and allows you to do these, all these different graphs, which I really appreciate visually as well. And in particular, it shows this downward move. So the trend is obviously right, and we've had the same kind of report for a few years now, and I think we are doing really good work. And having been here since the beginning of all these graphs, the '09-'10, I think, was roughly when I started on the board, it's really rewarding to actually see that play out over time. I think you've identified the critical point, which is the disruptive, the mushy categories of disruptive acts. And I would also say maybe disorderly conduct is in there, too. It's the third D. I don't know, maybe that has a clearer definition in practice, but defiance of authority, disruptive acts, and then there's disorderly behavior in here. But I, just tossing that out there, I don't know what that is. I mean, I know it's a thing that police arrest people for on TV also, but I don't, truly, I don't know what it is. And it seems to me-
Gretchen, where is that?
Well, I'm looking under number of suspensions by demographic group, 18-19, and it's kind of, I am on-
Twenty-eight.
Page 31 of the packet.
Thirty-one.
And it's like the, it's kind of smack-a-sit. It comes right in between defiance of authority and disruptive acts. So I'm not sure if that's-
Yeah, I can-
Anyway, it's the same thing. I mean-
Yeah, I can speak to that, actually. We've been looking. All right, so the reason why that number is really down is because last year-
You fixed the definition.
We took out a lot of the subjective options.
Good.
So at the time that we did it, we still had some in the system.
Got it.
So that's what we see.
That's what that is, trailing. But that's an example, then, of what can hap, and when you made that change, did the defiance of authority and disruptive act go up?
No.
Or did we see, so that's really, that's great. But I think that's the heart of it right there. And you've already identified it, and all I would say is I would be very anxious to get your recommendations from your subcommittees on the discipline committee, which I've gone to occasionally, but I haven't been to recently. So I think we, well, speaking only for myself, I would be anxious to get the recommendations and start moving on that. Also, just side point here, as we look at the trend line, I can't help but, my eyes keep going towards 2014-15, which seemed to be the lowest in everything. What were we doing that year when everything, suspensions and everything seemed really low? Is there something magical happening here?
I think that was Senate Bill 100, when we really, you know, that's when you had a significant trend-
We took, yeah. And then we had a little bit of a bump up. Yeah. Right. And interestingly, you know, there's going to be follow-on to Senate Bill 100, too. So that's something I know EdRed is keeping its eye on. And as an organization of suburban school districts, I think we're trying to contribute to that conversation. And, you know, certainly, if we come up with some creative ideas around those categories that you identified, I think those are the kinds of things that would be worth sharing with our EdRed organizations, that we can share that information with our state legislators. EdRed has an ad hoc working committee, or did last year, and I'm not sure if we've reconstituted for this year, on SB 100 and the follow-on on the discipline stuff. So I think this is really, really, really exciting, and I appreciate all the work you guys are doing on it.
We did the presentation to EdRed like four years ago?
Yes.
Right when Senate, is that right? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'll connect you guys so that, you know, if there's opportunities to share our wisdom, that would be great.
Go.
Just quickly, what can we attribute the current decrease in suspensions to?
Oh, there's so many things. If I'm looking at just kind of the trends, I know one of the significant changes that the board approved just a few years ago was the dress code. And so I think when you look at defiance of authority and how subjective that is, and I think about all the different interactions that a lot of students who unfortunately had that challenge, I think that is a piece of it. I also know that our deans, and I just wanted to really thank them for their hard work, Dean Bumbry and Soriano and Shanahan and King for their efforts. And they really feel that we must have restorative acts, you know, for students to really come back into the space, and they've really been taking the time with a lot of students and really, you know, having those very difficult conversations with students who may have some verbal conflicts with one another. So they're very proactive in thinking and nature. So I think there's just been a number of different acts that we've done over the years where it's contributed to the numbers that we're seeing.
Monique?
So I'm excited when I hear that. I mean, I know that you've put in a lot of work, just being intentional about what we say and what we do, right? And so I've witnessed that, and I've seen that just since I've been on the board, and we've talked about these numbers. I think another thing that has created this change is accountability. I don't know if we've always had the environment in which kids could make a mistake and still come back and that mistake not be held against them forever. And so there's a, there's a different, I don't know, just a different way that the discipline has been approached. So while you're giving credit, I want to give you credit, Dr. Robinson, to your just intentionality of making sure that we're diving in to this work and not just talking about it, but really analyzing the work and doing the work and being intentional, because it takes time. Those numbers are very challenging to drop, right? You don't just do it unless you just stop doing the work, right? And then you see that drop or that significant rise. And so it's, you're being very intentional so that whatever we do sticks, and we're just not putting stuff in place just because we want to see the numbers drop. So I want, you know, just thank you and your leadership with the discipline committee. But this information is going to be really critical to how, whatever those next steps are and how we move forward.
I agree. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Pat?
Yeah, this is great. It is really good to see the numbers going down, and the intentionality, I think, is really important, as Monique said. I have a really tiny, specific question and then a broader question. So the increase in drug offenses, is that because of the e-cigarettes? Is that a big piece of that?
It is. It is. And you would notice a spike there in that particular category. And yes, we've definitely attributed that to the e-cigarette usage.
And then my other question is, when we talked about the subjective, and I know we've talked about this for a couple of years, those subjective categories, what does it mean? The other one that kind of strikes me is this unauthorized presence, and we had a big uptick in that. And again, maybe this is in the works with the discipline committee, but, you know, to what extent are those racialized? Are, do we need training? Are we have, because I think we talked about this last year, that is it an African-American kid being told you're in the wrong place and getting, you know, in trouble for it versus a white kid saying, "Go to class," you know, getting told to go to class? So I just want to, like, to what extent have we kind of looked at that in detail? And, you know, are there training opportunities? Are there definitional opportunities? Kind of, can you talk a little bit more about that? Because I think that's really important when you talk about these murkier, particularly these murkier categories.
Yeah, sure. Typically, the students who are getting the infractions of unauthorized presence are somewhere they are not supposed to be during class time. So we've really been intentional with the safety team to really, on their rounds, to really find out where students are supposed to be if they're loitering and appropriately move them to where they should be. So I think just having more eyes and more intentionality about finding these pockets in this significantly large building to really make sure that students are where they need to be. And so I think that we can attribute the uptick with the students who are actually now being held accountable.
And more consistently across all kids?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll add to that, that we also are looking at this unauthorized presence category as an opportunity for engagement for some kids through an MTSS approach. We have a list of these kids and their engagement in school, and we're working on some larger school-wide PBIS structures to really make sure that the kids are engaging in the way that they're supposed to be.
That's great. Thank you.
Liz?
I was wondering, have members of the administration, staff, or safety been formerly trained in restorative justice practices? And is that something that you would be open to expanding for an alternative to suspension?
Sure. It's so interesting that you would say that. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had some of our community partners in the building to speak with our safety team and to do just that, to really introduce themselves to the work that they do in the community, and also seek and find ways to double down of restorative training here in school. So we are definitely on that pathway. Our staff, our safety team members are trained with restorative conversations and how to have those tough conversations. That notion of restorative is more than just, you know, that conversation. It's more of a overwhelming philosophical belief that becomes a part of the community when more and more people know what the expectations are with those basic tenets. So as far as a reduction opportunity, we're looking at ways to really engage our stakeholders and our discipline committee to really gain more access and more information from what the committee thinks could work in our school community. We really take a deep dive into the discipline. So at our next meeting, I'm going to present this information to the committee where, again, we're going to really look at and try to identify the why. And typically, there's some really good outcomes from those conversations where we are looking at possible training and possible getting other folks in to have conversations with our folks who are on the front lines.
Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Robinson.
Still at it.
I want to echo what everyone has said. I want to commend you for the work that you've done around this since you've joined the district. It's been intentional, and your approach is community building, and I think oftentimes that's what happens. The Black males feel like they're not part of the school community. Just in an effort to unpack this a little bit more, I wonder, is there, how much work or information sharing is there with District 65 on students that have a history of discipline infractions and, you know, behaviors? How much do we know about these students? Like, is it possible that these students are experiencing this in District 65 and as they transition into 202, there's just continuity there? Has there been any work around this information sharing with District 65?
You know, I think when students come to us, we take them as they are. Of course, it's always helpful to know how we can care and love them best. When we have that information, of course, we do what we do to make sure that our students, when they come here, are very comfortable, and if there are some identified challenges those students may have, we're very intentional about being proactive in supporting them before those behaviors manifest.
Yeah. Another benefit, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because, being a father of three Black males, I have lived experience of seeing how systemically oftentimes the Black male student has challenging adult student relationships. And really, in terms of restorative justice, this needs, you know, the whole restorative process, not so much for just the safety folks, but like inside of the classroom, because I think this is a mindset issue. I mean, like I said, I commend you for this work, but as a Black man, this really saddens me to see the disproportionality of these numbers. It is unacceptable. I know it's, you know, national trends reflect that, but living in Evanston and being proud of Evanston and knowing that if it can be done anywhere, it could be done in Evanston, and being a father that's had to advocate for my son, when I see unfair treatment and ultimately, these young Black males become silent, they start sitting in the back of the class, this happens long before they get to high school. And- And I'm just suggesting that we take a look at a task force involving parents because the conversations that go on at the dining room table reveal a lot. And I, I think, I think it's a community problem. And I think we really need to listen to the voices of our young black males. Because I know how I raise my children. Everybody may not necessarily know how, but as a father, there are certain, you know, there, there, there's, there's certain, let me just say that as a black man, I see the unfair treatment. And I see when, if you don't have a black male presence or a strong family presence, the boys start to check out long before they get to the high school. And I think we really need to start listening to the voices of these students that have had these experiences, not just starting here at the high school, but in our educational system here in Evanston as a whole. And I'm just, I just wanted to put that out there. But we really need to continue to unpack this, and I know you've done tremendous work in a short amount of time. But I'm hurt and I'm saddened by these numbers because these young black men do not have a predisposition to break the rules or to be worse in terms of behavior than any other children. I truly do not believe that, and I think that's something that we need to continue to unpack. And also to start looking at what's happening K through eight because they check out long before, and the behaviors start to come when they feel like they're not part of the community.
Thank you for that, Jude. I think that one of the things that Dr. Robinson and I have been trying to figure out is how do we engage black male students differently? How do we support them differently? What can we do in addition to all of the things that we do? What, what more can we do? And we've had a conversation with Youth Guidance and Becoming a Man program and looking to bring that here to ETHS. We're looking, trying to figure out, like, how do we support that as a, as a district, like financially, if we can do that? But because your comments, you know, aren't lost on us, and I'm going to go out of protocol as a black man, we've been really trying to figure out, like, what can we do? Because you're right, our black boys don't have a predisposition to be in trouble, absolutely. And like, but also, there's some externalizing behaviors. There's some things that are happening with them. And if we can do more mentoring, do more support, more coaching with them, we know that we can get some different outcomes. But definitely appreciate you saying that.
To add is the whole notion of social-emotional learning in the classroom space too, building community that way. Yeah.
We've talked about using community members in this process too because we have many black men in our community who want to be a part of, of this work and this process. This is all about the large work that we have taken, taken up in Evanston at ETHS. We've, we've taken this on, and we know it's challenging. We knew when we started it was going to be challenging. This is, this is the, I, I almost think of it as the big piece around our equity work, looking at student achievement and well-being and looking at discipline. These are, these are two big pillars, not the only, but they are big in this work. And while we will always have discipline because we are dealing in a high school with students, we can see the trend that we want to see, but we can also see the disparities that Jude spoke of so eloquently. So you started by saying, "We've made, we've made a lot of progress, but we still have work to do." And I appreciate that. We have made a lot of progress, and I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to ignore that. I mean, the numbers and, and the, the charts are impressive. The fact that we are looking so much at reducing the numbers of suspensions, and, and we have. We've really reduced them, and we're looking at other, other ways we can keep students in school and in classes. That's, that's amazing. That's powerful because this is where they belong, even when they make mistakes. So for all of our students. And, and so I, I just am hoping that we can continue the work. What do you think, the two of you? What are neck, what are your, what are next steps? What, what are, what are the plans? I know that we'll continue to look at, at some of these areas specifically, but what are next steps?
You know, go back to, to Mr. Lawday when you talked about really kind of building community. I think that's essential. I think we really have to tap into our community agencies and our non-for-profits to really expand and bridge the gap for students, but also seek other opportunities for our students to have a restorative act. So, you know, we're doing, we're having some great conversations at our Discipline Committee meeting.
Yes.
That meets, we have about four more meetings this school year. But we've had some great discussions and, and meaningful work, and, and a lot of this is, is what's talking about.
Thanks again, Dr. Robinson, for all your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you both. All right. Okay, we are at course change proposals. Dr. Beavis is standing, so he's leading this.
Okay, course change proposals. Here's the rapid chart, which is basically the recommend, agree, perform, input, and decide. And this is the informational part of the, of the meeting. Next time we will meet, the board will decide on these proposals, as is the, the action. Relevance, all of the course proposals are aligned to District Goal One. And the purpose of all course changes is to improve student achievement and/or clarify prerequisites and pathways. Some of the highlights, we're going to have a female identifying section. We're off, we would like to offer a female identifying section of economics. Traditionally, econ is a male space in high schools and in colleges. The course change addresses this in the same manner as women engineering. The goal is to address significant pipeline issues in the field of economics. Had a conversation with an economics professor at Northwestern who was very excited and agreed to support the, the creation and development of this section and how this would be taught, and have a lot of discussions around that with our, with our team. The PE department is proposing offering an all-gender option for freshman PE. Each year, there are students who do not feel comfortable in a single-gender freshman PE course. This proposed change is in response to a need articulated by students in support of their well-being. And this has been articulated over the last few years, so in meeting with the department, we've decided to go ahead with, with this change. You also see that there's a U.S. history revision. This is all levels of U.S. history, the mixed level and the AP. The goal of that revision is to change, to challenge students rather, to explore intersectionality between their individual histories and the story of the United States. Students will examine both traditional and non-traditional resources and texts to engage students in doing history. This course challenges the students to master the language and skills related to historical argumentation and allows students to create content, research papers, podcasts, documentaries, blogs, and radio broadcasts. This came out of a discussion we had several years ago, our department chair with Darnisa Amanti and the Deepra Group. But then it also was given fresh energy in a conversation with Northwestern. The Northwestern History Department reached out to us and said, "We need to get more students interested in history." Because at the college and university level, there are fewer and fewer history majors. So we had a conversation, brought a panel of history professors in, met with the U.S. History Department, and talked through the way history in college has changed, that it's not Blue Book exam-driven, that there's more hands-on research and more doing history, and, and it's evolving. So we seek to complement that at the high school level. And there are also, the big headline, I suppose, would be 80 Pathways to Honors Course Changes. We're moving from 80 mixed-level courses to Pathway to Honors Courses. So we have a 10-year history of Pathway to Honors Courses, a 30-year history of mixed-level courses. That's where students enroll to take a course for regular honors credit, and they're in the same classroom together. We have a 30-year history of doing that. The difference here is, is earning, working towards something versus enrolling in it. By virtue of enrolling in the electives, and these electives that we're looking at primarily, we're looking at all of our CTE and all of our fine arts electives that are not Advanced Placement or Project Lead the Way. There's about 80 of those. We also are looking at American legal and U.S. history mixed level and moving and transitioning those courses as well. The idea here is that you clarify the pathway to honors for each course. You, it's about the quality of student work versus the amount of extra work. One of the things that came up in various conversations with groups is that for each mixed-level course, and actually literally each section of a mixed-level course, there's a different way. There's more, you know, the requirement is if you're taking this class for honors, you're going to do more. That was the traditional model. Maybe you'd write an eight-page paper as opposed to a five-page paper. Or you might have six citations versus three. Again, there's nothing there that really speaks to the quality of the work, and it quantifies it in a very awkward way. So we're moving away from that. We're moving toward a Pathway to Honors program. For example, in CTE, they're looking at artifacts, looking at sort of an artifact portfolio with a reflection on 21st century skills included. So actually, the teachers will work with the students on identifying the 21st century skills, being very transparent around those. Students will engage in the coursework, pick two of their most outstanding examples of, you know, growth in the 21st century skills, write about that, and then that would be that pathway. In fine arts, the pathway, in visual arts, is to create a, there's an artist's sketchbook that's a reflective iterative process that the student will maintain. All students will maintain that. And then they'll submit portions of that sketchbook or an artist's notebook for honors credit consideration. It'll be rubric-driven, standards-driven, as well as rubric-driven. This will lend a level of consistency to the, to the mixed-level courses that have never been there before. And as you know, it's a, it's a, it's an equity strategy that we've had, had great success with in the past. So that's the, those are the headlines. Open to questions?
Very good. Very exciting. Right. Question?
Couple things. First, real quick and easy, I see that Contemporary Adult Life is on that list of changes. Could you please change the name of that course? I just, I know I brought this up before. It seems like a real opportunity. You put it on this list. There's got to be a better name. Just had to get that out of the way. Secondly, I think it's terrific that we're making this Pathway to Honors, which by the way, is a much better name than calling it Earned Honors, which is how we started off this program when I was brand-new to the board, again, going back about 10 years ago. I think this is a much better way of identifying what we're all about here. And I applaud that, and I, I think it's terrific that we're doing it. I think it's also interesting that I didn't get a single email in my box today noting that this was on our agenda for tonight. There's not crowds of people lined up outside to complain or yell. And I, by saying this, I don't mean to invite that, so don't get any ideas, but I, I think that we've demonstrated over these many years that this is a positive development, not without growing pains or the need to tweak and revisit and, you know, just look at the new name, Pathway to Honors. I think that, that clarifies it quite a bit. And I have to just interject a small, this is more in the nature of commentary, and I'll make it really quick. I don't know if anybody listens to the Malcolm Gladwell podcast, Revisionist History, but if you don't, you should listen to the third season, the first two episodes, which start off nominally being about taking the law school admissions test, the LSAT, something I'm familiar with because I did do it a long time ago. And in particular, the flaws in that testing scheme, which reward people who can complete the test fast. So the hares, not the tortoises. When in fact, the law profession is really more about the tortoise, the person who can think. And Malcolm Gladwell, as some people may or may not know, and people can criticize Malcolm Gladwell. I'm not saying that he's an expert, you know, people do criticize him. But he is Canadian. And one of the points that he makes in his podcast, I'm not giving it away, but you really all ought to listen to it because I think it is relevant to what we do here, is in Canada, the top three elite universities, one of which he went to, he claims, University of Toronto maybe, and then McGill, and then whatever universities in Vancouver. These are like the elite Canadian institutions. And the size of these institutions is like 70,000 students at one of them. And he contrasts that with America's elite, you know, colleges and universities, the Harvard, Yale, et cetera. And his point really is, it's not that there are only that many really smart people. It's that we are cutting off the access to them. So that gets all tangled up in his discussion of the LSAT, and it's, it's just really good for you to listen to. And I, I thought it was relevant to bring it up here, and I only listened to it a day or two ago. So I applaud the change, and I also applaud, for those who may think it's inconsistent to open a freshman PE class to all genders while at the same time having a separate section for students who identify as female in econ, I say this is exactly what we're all about. We're being responsive. And we are, you know, making these classes work for our students in the best possible way. So thank you.
Thank you.
Pat?
I just want to applaud you as well and make a comment because I sit in on Curriculum Forum with Pete. You know, we, it just, it's an opportunity, if you are available sometime, you should come because it's an opportunity to see the level of discourse that the adults in this building have around instruction. That is, you know, I work in education. I'm around a lot of people who talk about education. But I'm just always awed and proud to hear our faculty on a, you know, late afternoon when they've been working all day, just asking great questions of each other and multiple perspectives from math teachers and art teachers asking about history classes and special ed classes. It's just, it's so powerful, and it's just a moment that I want to applaud and recognize that it happens all day here. Because we have really great people doing really great work. So I just want to let you all have my little window into that experience. It's really, really terrific. So we should be very proud of the work that they do. So thanks, Pete.
Thank you. Echo?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that the change to the freshman PE class is actually huge, and that has, impacts every single student that comes to ETHS. That's a class that they all have to take. And so this will be a huge change for all students of all gender identities.
Well, thank you. Thank you again. I'm very excited, particularly about the Pathway to Honors Courses. They're all, it's just, it just completes the work that we have started. You listed a couple of references, Carol Duett's book and Claude Steele's book, but I know that there are many others. So kudos to you and your team. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I don't know, Dr. Beavis, if you want to stay there, if you want to. Okay. do. Okay. All right. Yes, move around a little bit. So we're at item number nine, our first reading of Press Policy Issue Number 101.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. How's that for a transition? All right. So the Policy Committee of the Board met on October 1st to review the most recent policy update from our service press, plus Policy Issue 101 and the five-year review. This is the first reading of the policy update. We're also recommending edits to Policy 2230, Public Participation and Petition of the Board, and Policy 480, Disposition of District Property Policy. Yes. Adopted as presented is clearly articulated on the scorecard. It's called the Press Scorecard in your packet. If there are any questions on any of those policies or draft revisions, you could ask now, or you could move forward.
I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're at item number 10, Comments from the Public. And Dr. Beavis, I believe you...
Okay. So speakers who have signed up for public comments will be invited in the order that they signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time and signal to you at the end of two minutes as a courtesy. I'll say about, you know, about two. I will let you know that time is up, and please stop at the three-minute mark in the event that that becomes necessary. I will time it on my phone, so there will actually be a, it'll ring, and then I'll fumble with it. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak at the lectern up here. Let's see. Please state your name and address. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individuals are expressly prohibited. Please understand that the school board does not respond to public comment, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. Okay, so first, we have Louisa Bond, and it looks like a two-for, and Mia, I can't, is it Hov, was it? Okay. It's still three minutes, though, okay? Okay, let me get the timer going here.
Hello, I'm Mia Houseworth, and I'm a junior at ETHS.
And I'm Louise Bond. I'm also a junior. We're two out of the three students who started the Sustainability Committee here in the past couple months. The other is Sarika Wyker, and she couldn't be here tonight, but she was also a part of it.
So we formed this committee at the end of last school year because we were concerned about climate change in our community. We wanted to make sure that ETHS is doing their part to achieve the city of Evanston's Climate Action Resilience Plan, or CARP. And we wanted to recognize all the amazing things the school is currently doing to achieve that goal, and also how busy all administrative members are. So we wanted to jump into further those sustainability efforts as best we can. It's really important to us as students that the school we attend is making ongoing efforts to be environmentally responsible. So we wanted to make sure this committee is action-based and working towards CARP.
So we had the pleasure last year of speaking with Dr. Campbell and Dr. Witherspoon about having a board-level committee in the school, and they were both really enthusiastic, which is great. So this past summer, the three of us went ahead and reached out to interested ETHS students, teachers, parents, community members, and including people from community environmental organizations, such as Citizens of Greener Evanston and Collective Resource. And we did have our first committee meeting on September the 25th. Unfortunately, no one from the board was able to make that one, but we hope that there could be some representation in the future at meetings. We value your presence, and we think that productivity of conversations could be increased, important decisions and actions can be made, and more information sharing, so we have more representation throughout the school.
So we're here tonight to not only inform the board of our committee, but also to report that we had a great first meeting. Many ideas were discussed, and we're very happy to be working on forming subcommittees now in order to achieve as much as possible. We also have the official minutes from the first meeting to pass out to you as reference, as Louise is getting. All three of our emails can be found at the bottom of the minutes, as well as a full list of attendees. So feel free to email the three of us with follow-up questions or comments. And we thank you all for your time and your work, and we will be in touch with you via email.
Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is Hal Sprague.
Good evening. My name is Hal Sprague. I'm a former, I had kids here a long time ago. I live on Hartzell Street in North Evanston. I'm president of Citizens Greener Evanston, CGE, that the girl spoke about, an organization that started a long time ago before we even had the name CGE. And we were actually late to the game. I don't know, anybody here remember when the first international treaty was signed on climate change? Any idea? 1992. We were formed in the early 2000s, so we were late to the game. It's now twenty years later from when we started. And so we're, I wanted to say something that put a little urgency into this, because what the girl said is all true. They've done a huge amount of work to get us to where we are. They're requesting that we create a committee here that involves members of the board, members of the administration, so that it isn't just students talking and parents talking, but it also involves you all. CGE, Citizens Greener Evanston, has been working closely with the city on the implementation of the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, which was adopted almost a year ago. And we want to make sure that we're involving some of the largest groups of community members like the school, like District 62, 65, and 202. And tonight, I also want to maybe really just support what the students are doing. You may remember that on September 20th, they organized the strike at Fountain Square where more than 400 people came. And they were there to basically demand or request strongly that the older generations, of which I'm a part, those with political power, take action now so that there will, in a quote, "There will still be a world out there for us when we leave high school." So with that same objective, they came to meet with members of the board to see if they could get the committee set up here to work with you closely, so that we wouldn't have to have strikes, but we could have routine or regular meetings and discussions. And so I hope that's something that you can take under consideration closely, because it's really critical, and it is an urgent matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Rosner.
Hello, my name is Rachel Rosner. We have a little theme tonight. I apologize for my informal attire. I actually just came from a climate action downtown with some students. My daughter is a senior, Bella Hubbard. And my understanding is that she and some friends were on ABC News tonight as part of a die-in in Daly Plaza, which is exciting and also quite a burden that this generation is carrying. And, you know, I'm really here also to talk about urgency. I'm a climate reality leader, trained by Al Gore himself, as is my daughter, actually. So one thing I'd like to offer to the board is that we've been trained to give climate reality presentations using Mr. Gore's slide deck. And I think a great place to start showing commitment about this issue is to make sure that you are fully informed. I care deeply, I'm a longtime environmentalist, but also a life, a class of 83 Evanstonian, care deeply about equity. And the intersection of these two issues is paramount. I mean, that's where my heart is. And I think it's so important to understand, on a global level, this is a justice issue, because the people who are creating the problem, which is largely Americans and Europeans, are not the people who are bearing the brunt. When we think about Hurricane Maria, Hurricane Dorian now, Hurricane Idai, which many people haven't even heard of, it was in Mozambique at the same time as Notre Dame was burning, but a thousand people died in Africa at that time. So that inequity is egregious. And here in Evanston, it's also an equity issue, because those of us with resources can afford to neglect this issue. We can, we know that our kids, we have health insurance, we have air conditioning, we're going to be okay. And, uh-oh.
One minute.
Okay. Have I said all my things? Well, so I actually had the privilege of helping kids to organize that strike a couple weeks ago. And I want to emphasize that the movement is happening, the shift is happening, right? That was seven million people around the world were striking that day. And I feel that Evanston is in a unique position as an educated, affluent community that cares about equity to really take the lead on this issue. And I hope you all take that to heart, and, you know, do everything in your power to address it. Thanks.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up for public comment?
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we are at FOIA's. We have one FOIA. Dr. Beavis?
Yes, we have a FOIA from Hanson, and the response is in your packet.
Okay, good. All right. Board Committee Reports. Do we have any committee reports? Any activity, Jude? Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Pat. Just wanted to share a few highlights from the last Foundation 202 Board Meeting, which was held on September 26th. And please bear with me, because I forgot my readers at home, so I'm going to split my way through this.
Is this being televised?
It is. Oh, wow. We're reader buddies. I can see this. Thank you so much. All right.
Right.
So the new board members for Foundation 202 were welcomed at our last meeting. There was also conversation about diversifying the board, having more diversity on the board, to build on the increasing diversity that we're currently seeing on Foundation 202 Board. One of the new board members is a fellow classmate from the class of 1984, Rob Adelman. So I was happy to see him join the board as well. Also, there was conversation about making an effort to align the giving with the interests of the potential donors, such as Michael Arrington, who recently was a huge donor for our new wellness center. And they want to kind of, the board is interested in trying to continue that trend, to try to bring more donors on board from that approach. Also, they talked about the benefit this year, the annual benefit, which will be held on February 29th of 2020. And this year, the benefit will be more traditional, like a gala. I thought I had the name of the place where it's being held, but it's going to be more like a gala this year on February 29th. Also, the board has been talking the past few meetings about the wanting more exposure for the hard work that they do in raising the funds for all of these beautiful improvements that we see here on campus. And so everyone was very happy, everyone's happy and excited that a banner is going to be revealed, a foundation banner is going to be revealed at our last football, home football game on October 27th at the football field. And just to remind everyone, the new turf that the foundation helped to help to make possible through donors. So everyone is pretty excited about that. And it was also, we also talked about the grand opening of the Wellness Center, which is upcoming on October 25th at our last football game again. Also, there's an upcoming retreat, I believe, which is happening in November. And again, the board is focused on trying to bring more and more donors on board from the strategy of donor interest, trying to bring people on board. Again, just like Michael Arrington, they brought him on board because he's a former football player, an alumna from ETHS, and trying to bring people more on board again from their interest. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you very much.
You look good enough.
Only that time.
I have a whole supply in my office if you ever need any. And I know.
All right. Do we have other committee reports? Anybody else? All right. Where are we? So we are at our Student Board Report. Echo?
Hello. So I'll start by talking about the global climate strike that was on September 20th. As I mentioned before, they were around 400 people, including students and community members, and this was part of a global movement. Currently, the next steps are students are engaging in finding ways to bring the momentum from that event to actually applying to education and action within ETHS, within the student body, as well as other ways we can see approaching environmental issues. Second, male identifying locker rooms opened, which also means that a new pathway that connects the north wing and the west wing is open, which if you're talking about equity issues is huge, because prior to that, only male identifying students would be able to travel indoors between the north and west wing. All other people would have to go through pneumonia alley, which if you're in the swimming unit, is extremely cold. That's why it's called pneumonia alley, or senior courtyard, I think, is the official term.
What's the official term?
Senior courtyard.
Oh, I never heard that.
Yes. Students are involved with staff reviewing the tardy policy, which is an extremely common area of concern among students, so making, looking at new ways to increase the amount of class time for students rather than having to leave class to go get a pass, things like that. The pep rally happened, and almost all the fall sports were represented. A lot of students showed up in the stands, and it was one of the best pep rallies that most people had experienced, which was exciting. Homecoming Court also happened, and this year, as I think years before, instead of king and queen, it was orange and blue to allow for students of all gender identities to be involved in Homecoming Court, which had support widely from all students. And then parent-teacher conferences just happened last week, and many student groups, as well as boosters, use that time to fundraise for things like hurricane relief in the Bahamas, building a well, and the Japanese trip abroad, the Japanese class trip abroad. And then finally, classes are in full swing, and so are college applications for many seniors, which is, yeah, taking control of the senior class. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, Dr. Witherspoon.
And that's a lot.
That is.
So I just want to be sure that I lift up that Dr. Campbell has been appointed by Governor Pritzker to serve on the Birmingham Inclusive School Task Force of the state of Illinois. And he will soon be beginning on that role. So congratulations, Marcus. Also, our first Community Build Day will be this Saturday, October 12th. That's from nine to three. But if you want to join it, you need to get signed up ahead of time online. So be sure to do that. You can find that on our website. Tomorrow, I'm sorry, a week from tomorrow evening, Tuesday, October 15th, is the ETHS Jazz Big Band Concert. And that's always a popular one, and that'll be in the school auditorium starting at seven. On Thursday, October 17th, we'll be hosting the Family Talk Series. This program is titled Bullying, Social Media, and Risky Behaviors: Helping Teens Make Better Choices. To parents, guardians, family members out there, and even as well as students, this one begins at 6:30 PM. It's in Room North 112, and you're a very... We've been doing this for a few years now, but it's not the first time we've offered an evening activity either for families. Students go home, they have a lot to say about it, families wanting to know more about it. It's not restricted only to families of freshmen. Others have come in previous years, they're welcome back. But he is an educator and a community builder. He lifts up relevant topics of discussion from violence prevention and racial justice to 21st century parenting and campus life. If you've never encountered Calvin Terrell, be sure you come 7:00 PM, the auditorium, Wednesday, October 16th. You'll know why I'm encouraging you. And that includes my report, concludes, it includes it too. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We are at action items. The first action item is approval of e-school program resolution, which we heard about earlier today. Could we have a motion, please?
Motion for approval of the e-learning program resolution.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
LaDai.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. The next is approval of the Latino Heritage Month proclamation, and we're going to have that read. Lisa is going to read it in Spanish. She'll alternate paragraphs, and then Liz will read in English.
of all who call the United States of America home. Ancestors of America's Hispanic-Latino community have been on this continent for centuries, preceding the current boundaries of the United States, and generations have woven unique threads into the diverse fabric of our country and played an important role in shaping our national character as a people of limitless possibility. (Spanish) As President Barack Obama noted, Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our nation's success in extraordinary ways. They serve in the military and government, attend schools across America, and strengthen the economy. They are the father who works two jobs to give his children a better life, and the mother who ventures out to take a risk and start a business. They are the student who pursues their greatest aspirations through higher education. They are the lawful permanent resident who seeks to naturalize and become a citizen, and the business leader whose loved ones have lived in the United States for generations. They are oftentimes bilingual, and invaluable intellectual language skill we strive to provide all our students. Each day, we see the tremendous impact they have on our communities, and they reflect an enduring truth at the heart of our nation. No matter where you come from or where your roots are, with hard work and perseverance, you can make it in America. (Spanish) To honor the achievements of Hispanics and Latinos in America, the Congress, by Public Law 100-402, as amended, has authorized and requested issuing annually a proclamation designating September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month. (Spanish) Therefore, we, the Board of Education of District 202, proclaim that in celebration of past, present, and future exceptional Hispanic-Latino-American leaders and the valuable contributions of the Hispanic-Latino community, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2019, through October 15th, 2019, as Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you. Thank you both for your reading. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Next item is approval of revised board member expenses resolution. Motion for approval, please.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item, approval of emergency expenditure of funds for replacement of 10-inch steam pipe system in underground tunnel.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item is the consent agenda, and it consists of approval of minutes from September 16th, 2019, closed session meeting, and September 16th, 2019, regular meeting, approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointments to staff, certified and support, change in status, educational stipends and mentors, resignation of support staff, release of safety. And, pardon me, and there's an addendum, and the addendum is appointment to staff, support staff, correction to start date, release, safety, negotiated agreement, and nutrition services.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thank you. We are at old and new business. Does anybody have old or new business to present? We're at closing polling of the board. Does anybody have additional comments? If not, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose? Just kidding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.